It's called Order at 6:31 PM. So the meeting is called Order, and for all of you appearing virtually, could you please identify? 802 ending in 90, hello? Who are you, 802 ending in 90? I don't know, or they're just ignoring us. Steven, can you hear us? Steven's not there. Could you mute 802 and then see who they are? There we are, here comes Steve. Steven, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, it seemed pretty broke up, this better.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, quick, do research on that number. Okay, so, present at the meeting, do we have President Wilson on the line at all? No?
No, I can see.
We don't know if that was his attempt, so we don't know. No, I guess we'll be good for now. President Charbonneau? President, I'm sorry, you're not the new president. Councilman Charbonneau, Councilman Vishon, Councilman Curtis, City Clerk and Treasurer James Johnson, I'm Cholter Programs Director Rebecca Terrian. Additional staff members, I have Mr. Brenier, I have Mr. Brown, I know there are more people here, I have our interim city fire chief. Is Travis about anywhere? Travis, welcome. And you always sit by the end, right by the door. Right, and Mr. Chaney. Anybody I missed? Before we go to the next agenda item, are there any additions, solutions, or edits? Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of November 20, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I move to approve the minutes of November 20, 2023.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 20, 23. Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hoes?
Madam Mayor, I was not here, but I watched the video, so I'm voting aye.
Thank you. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Sign this for you now. Thank you. Okay. We are now going to go into opening the floor for a public comment for each agenda item. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting, and I thank you. So we are now going to go to comments by members of the public. When your name is called, I ask that you please speak into the microphone, state your name and your residence and/or affiliation. You will have two minutes for your comment. Do I have somebody willing to time? Any council member? Mr. Manette? Two minutes.
For the record, my name is Paul Manette. I'm a resident of Newport City. Madam Mayor and city council members, as we all know, recently the governor talked about a potential 16% increase in the education tax. So when I saw the draft Newport City budget with also another 16% potential increase in that tax rate, I was kind of like flabbergasted. That would be if both budgets and taxes come to fruition, it would be about a 32% increase for the city residents. I know you're just going to be discussing the draft budget tonight, but just to keep this in mind, that if you approve a 16% increase, and say the education's a 16%, that's about a $500 increase for an average homeowner who has a $100,000 home. And many residents in Newport are struggling. They have not had double-digit pay increases like many city employees had over the past couple of years. They're barely making it to pay their taxes, they're barely making it to heat their home and things like that. So I hope the council, as you go through your budget this year, sharpen your pencils and keep that in mind, that there are people struggling, and if we get wopped with a 32% combined tax increase, that will probably put a lot of people over the edge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hopkins?
Could I stand up? I guess I could, but I won't. My comments are really sort of general. First of all, I would like to say that I think that some of the council meetings have become very contentious overall and very personal, and I think that we should attempt to avoid that in the future, if it's at all possible. And the other thing that came to light is, I would like to say that I'd like to thank the staff of the city of Newport, because I think that they do come out above and beyond call of duty a lot of times. And so I think that we really have to remember that these people are working hard and trying to make everything as easy as possible for them. And it just seems like we, what happens at a council meeting, I think affects all of the city workers. So I just think we need to be a little more polite and a little more considerate. Everybody has their own opinion, and I think we need to give people the chance to say how they feel and to not be harassed at. So that's all. But major thanks to the city.
Thank you for your comment. The next item on the agenda is the North Country Mountaineers Annual Snowmobile MOU. Appearing virtually, this is Steven Delphie. Can you hear us? You're up. Can you hear us, Steve?
My turn. Yeah, my name's Steve Delphie. I'm with the North Country Mountaineers Snowmobile Club. And we are looking for mission teams from Uppview Avenue and Landing Street, to open access the East Coast with Vermont, when the City Cinema and Waterfront Plaza for the 2023-2022 snowmobile season.
Was everybody able to hear that clearly?
Mm-hmm.
So the council... Steve, do you have something else you want to add?
Yes, there's also another part to it. We are also doing a VORAC. Well, we're looking to do a VORAC with the Newport Downtown Development. And we're looking to take a railroad bridge in Newport. Split that bridge using a rail. So we'll have, the whole side of the bridge would be for motorized vehicles going to work through the snow machines. They would permanently lay down on that side of the bridge to protect what is there currently. And we would split the bridge with a railing system, and on the side where the people would be walking, they would put benches on there so people could stop, take a break, sit down, look away to the lake. And in the summer, that motorized, we would use for bike, electric bikes, stuff like... And we would like your blessing to be able to do that. So we can work with this grant and try to get the muddies for this new grant.
So Steve, there are two pieces. One is your memorandum of understanding, and then the other one is the VORAC grant.
Right, this two and five pieces, correct.
Yes.
Steve and I and a few other gentlemen from the Snowmobile Club met a while back on the bridge, and they got my support. I think it's a great idea. Couple of years, they tried putting mats down and some temporary makeshift fence, and every night, kids would go by and they'd smash it and throw it in the lake. This would give it a permanent look, so in the summertime, the bikes can stay on one side, wouldn't interfere with the fishermen. And as he said, they could have some benches there. It just, it would divide the bridge, so in the wintertime, it'd be strictly for the snow machines. I agree with his idea, I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions before I ask for a motion? Chris, Steve?
I'm not sure if Steve would know this possibly, but since that bridge is attached to the railroad bridge, is there any issue working with that? Or is that railroad-owned, or is that just attached to?
Chris, the city owns the walkway.
Perfect, that's all.
That was redecked back when the bike path was built.
That's right.
So we actually own it.
Okay.
Where exactly would the snowmobiles go to? Would it be just through the park area?
Actually, they plan on... They've already talked with the Palmolos. So that little path that we built behind Vista in our Newport grocery, they will use that. They're looking at trying to get a small groomer. So they would groom that to get to the trestle. And then the trestle would be split, but they'd actually be on the track side of that.
Right, once they go over the trestle, how far would they go to Main Street?
I guess that would be up to... I think they're hoping that maybe they could park in Palmol Park, but ideally, it'd be nice if they could just park in that lower parking lot of the State Office, then they could go to Lagos and the warehouse. You know, in the wintertime, from the plaza side, it's quite a crutch to tell. That's the whole idea, to get them up to Main Street.
Thank you. Where are they going to be driving on to get to that parking lot? Through the bike path, or just crossing over next to the Main Street? So if they're coming off the bridge headed toward downtown, which direction would they go, which path would they take?
They would probably come right out, head right towards the street itself. Or they could park right there in Palmol Park. We'd have to make a designated spot so they didn't mess up any of our flowers and stuff like that. That's the concept, to get them closer to Main Street.
Can I have a motion that the council approve the memorandum of understanding as presented by North Country Mountaineers, governing the city's conditional permission for North Country Mountaineers to use city property at Landing Street and Broadview Street to establish, maintain, and groom a temporary snowmobile trail for a period starting December 15, 2023, and ending April 15, 2024.
Make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
The motion in a second. Any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hoes, nay? Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, you're in.
Thank you very much, everybody.
The next item on the agenda is the VORAC grant update, talking about the city portion of the partnership. Mr. Brown?
I'll be brief. So as you know, Newport City Downtown Development is spearheading the project, and they're going to be the lead applicant for the VORAC grant. So the RIT department, along with several other agencies and nonprofits, are partnering with them. So our proposal is to purchase a floating dock system to replace the aging dock at Gardner Park. So that would increase access to the lake for residents, but it would also allow us to partner with the new Newport Community Sailing Center. That's a local nonprofit that just started up to offer small boat sailing classes in the Inner Harbor. So that's one of our goals, and this seems like a perfect partnership. Along with dock purchase, we propose to purchase a small fleet of pedal boats, those that would use a bike. We're going to store those at Gardner Park. That would allow greater access for residents that don't have boats, and we'll store them at that dock as well. We also would like to purchase a small e-bike fleet, which are going to house down at the harbor, which is the trailhead for the Newport recreational path. And our plan is to use our existing POS system to rent those out. So the proposal has three benefits. It increases access to the lake and to the bike path for visitors and for residents. It provides additional summer activities, and it gives us additional revenue streams by renting the boats and the bikes. So that's what we're proposing with the VORAC grant with NCCD.
Any questions? I just wanted to bring up a little clarification so people understand how this is going to work with the entire partnership. Usually, the city does the application for this. However, in this case, because the city's asset will not be that high, more likely than not, the applicant will be NCCD, and then we will join in to that partnership. So the asset will be held by the applicant, and then at the end of, almost like a leaseback, and then at the end, we would get the asset back. Okay, so I just want everybody to understand that the city is not going to be the applicant on this specific huge partnership. Because our asset itself would only be, it would be approximately $30,000 in that range.
Yeah, it's like $30,000.
So it's not that high for us to have to take on and manage all of the other assets. I just wanted to clear that. Thank you.
That's always a good thing.
Yeah, no, right, but I just wanted people to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda, errors and omissions within anticipated votes. Mr. Chaney?
Good evening, everyone. So the grant list was filed. Only one minute. That's good. I might as well give you this too.
Thank you.
You want me to come right up here, huh?
I do. Thank you.
So we filed the grant list in August. We have until the 31st of December to correct any obvious errors or omissions to that process. I've got three issues here that I want you to take a look at. Only two of them are considered errors and omissions. Now, the way this process ends up working is that I can't change them, even though I know they're incorrect, and I've identified that. Unless you... Excuse me? Unless you give me permission to do so before the 31st. Okay? If you do so, I'm going to ask you to sign this form that will be filed as a certification down in Jim's office with the final grant list. Okay? And then the tax bills will be changed, and the new tax bills will go out. We can go through these individual changes. The third issue is FYI-only. There was a software download error in one of the veterans' exemptions, back at the time when I've got the other 39 of them. And I verified that exemption now. I got a call from the property owner. I did not want to include that because you technically don't have authority over the veterans' exemptions. I have to change it as soon as I verify it. However, it will reduce the taxable rate on that property by $40,000. Okay? The other thing that you need to understand is that I'll be filing the final grant list sometime in early part of January. We could have some additional changes that would not be errors, but may come from the state downloads. They continue to do their work on homesteads and current use issues. Okay? And if those things come through between now and the date we finally file it, then we'll have to change those as well. And I'll give you another FYI, okay? Now, as far as the error and admissions goes, a thing that I do need approval on. The first one is about the church up here, the Catholic Church. They bought three pieces of property in 2022. Okay, two of them were bought from non-exempt owners. And when the time the transfer was done, okay, the transfer was all done properly. However, the switch wasn't turned. Okay? And they were not given exempt status. Now, I've had a long talk with the powers to be in the office at the church, and these are exempt properties. Okay? They are going to be used for pious enterprises, and they fit clearly within the statute. In addition to that, they're abiding. So I'm asking for those two parcels, parcel 133153 and 133140, to be classified as exempt. Okay? And if you look at that first page, that's going to reduce the grant list by $28,600 and $104,100 for those two parcels. Questions? Okay? The second one's a little bit more complicated. All right, so there was... An individual owns, and the names are on here, but the individual owns four parcels in the city of Newport. Three of them are contiguous. Okay? There was a merger attempted by our office in this last year to merge three of those properties that touched each other, basically, but it... The wrong property was merged. Okay? 11001 is not... That's up by the lake road. The other three properties, which are 110016, 110017, and 11007R. Okay? And those are the ones that were supposed to be merged. Now, I've got to do three things to fix this because you can't just change one and have it come out right. The three right parcels need to be merged. 11007 needs to be inactivated. Okay, because that one is merged. And the one that was merged wrong, incorrectly, it has to be reactivated, and I'm going to assign the value that it had last year because there's no reason to change it. Okay? So what ends up happening is the merger actually increases the merge slot value. Okay, adds back in 11001's value of $40,200. However, 11007 gets merged, and that takes off $82,000. So you have a $27,200 decrease. Now, it had already decreased when you merged it the first time. This actually has to be done. Okay? It is a significant error, and at this particular point, we're missing a parcel on the grant list. And those are my errors and omissions for your enjoyment. Questions?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion that the council accept the city assessor's statement of errors and omissions as presented, and approve the city assessor's corrections of the identified errors and omissions in accordance with 32VSA Section 4261?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hoes, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
You want to wait, Jim?
No, I'll get it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution designating authorized official for the NBRC award, NBRC 19GVT10, causeway improvements within anticipated vote.
So this is a resolution for the NBRC grant. Originally, when we had done this grant paperwork, the city manager at the time was the designated signer. Back in, I believe, August, we changed it to the interim city manager, and now we need to change it to the mayor. So it's just basically updating our paperwork.
Right. I remember saying these numbers the first time I was here, over and over and over again. So may I have, please, a motion to designate... So may I have, please, a motion to designate the mayor as the authorized signatory on all documents relating to the NBRC award, NBRC 19GT10, causeway improvements?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? For the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Oh, okay, great. This is for me. Thank you. All good?
We're good.
The next item on the agenda is the MVP recertification with an anticipated vote. It's here.
I don't see the syllabus here yet. He had another meeting before ours.
Okay, so.
I don't know if you want to just hold off.
Yeah, so why don't we move that? Is everybody all right with us just moving to the next item? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Newport ambulance contract approval anticipated vote. And this is what was presented at the last meeting. So is anybody, we don't need to speak to that. So this was presented by Mr. Pronto at the last council meeting, and pretty in-depth discussion. And so, at this point, um, can I have a motion to move that the city accepted into the Newport ambulance contract?
So.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious. At the last meeting, when Mr. Pronto presented that, he was, he talked about Coventry possibly taking, you know, moving part of their coverage to Orleans. And if they had that, Newport would kind of, after our, our portion would increase because of Coventry? You know, I was just curious, did that happen? And the, is that recapturing of revenue being shared amongst all the ambulance, uh, people who's, the ambulance service? Or is it just being shifted to Newport?
So the, it did happen. Okay? And it will be our portion. We would have to.
So what we can, if the loss from Coventry is coming to us?
No, it's going to be the calls that they have to answer. So it's going to be based on the calls.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion here? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor? So what are the terms of new, so about the dollar amount?
So I don't have the, oh, well, if I do. I actually do have it right here. And of course, we will make a copy for you.
Are you sure you can do it that?
So, Madam Mayor, does it say, does it say the increase? I'm assuming there's an increase.
If you go down to the funding and the action, turn you in there. Um, it has the contract going through December 24, and it has the 24870, and it has the 12 monthly payments divided by the town and the dispatching fees and the invoices there. It's actually under Section 9. And it's, it's broken down in there.
But, does it say the?
I can actually go in and read and calculate it and get you exact number.
It's 17.74.
Yeah, thank you.
Was it 17?
I don't think he heard you, 17.74.
17.74.
Percent?
Percent.
Increase. And that's like Jan., one January?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the road agreement discussion. And I put this on the agenda because, um, I was getting a lot of emails and, um, and thank you, Mr. Reneal, for speaking to me about some of the emails, just so that we could begin a discussion and possibly put this on a future agenda item because apparently there are different areas, um, in Newport where people are saying that some roads are serviced that are not city roads, some other services are being provided, and, um, we need to see if we have road agreements, if we need to have a policy that has road agreements so that we're consistent, so that everybody is dealt with equally. Um, and so that was just put on there to put it on everybody's radar. And, um, I just wanted to know that there have been a lot of emails coming in, some situations going on. And so I want to keep that up on the radar. And then, um, of course, Mr. Reneal and I can sit down with Rebecca and et cetera and find out what you advise. Okay? But I just want you to know that they were coming in and better to put it on and talk about it. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is, this is Coventry, right? Is the Coventry fire agreement with an anticipated vote. And to bring you up to speed on this, the, um, Coventry Select Board was going to have this agreement on their agenda today, but their meeting was, um, canceled because of the current situation. So they will be putting it on Wednesday. However, they did say that pretty much it is already ready to go and that we could have our vote accepting it pending their vote. Ms. Tarian and I did actually go and meet with the Select Board, and, um, we went through the agreement, and they are willing to give us back a portion, you know, three quarters, pretty much, of the agreement that we had. So that, um, agreement was about to be lost, but it's not lost. So we have that back. So I would like, at this point in time, to ask that the council would, um, move to accept and enter into agreement with the town of Coventry pending their vote at the next Select Board meeting.
So are we getting the same money?
Yes, there's no change.
For less territory?
Provided, but we really don't know if it's less territory because we don't know how the calls will be going. But so, yes, they rerouted, made some rerouting, you know, saying, okay, this is a shorter distance, so we'll call maybe Orleans, or we'll call somebody else. However, we really don't know until a call comes in. But they did not lower the rates.
Well, I wouldn't make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Madam Mayor, um, yeah, so my understanding is that there are defined new call areas. So it's not so much that whoever's closest, there will be actual defined.
Yes.
Okay. And the second part of that is, is the contract, um, as we had discussed before, the rates have not changed for years since it was first signed. And I didn't know if there was any thought about raising rates, anticipating that we will be getting less calls and less capital towards the purchase of the new vehicle that we get eventually. It just seems like that we have kind of been at a stalemate with prices for a long time. And as we all know, everything has gone up in price.
Right. So to, to respond to that, pretty much when we met with them, it was to salvage a contract law, lost. However, they were asking to lower the rates, and they agreed not to lower the rates. So we're at least at the same rates, and then we're going to watch it as it goes and see how it plays out. So everything is always open to renegotiation. But we have, if we salvage whatever part of the contract we could. Sadly, that's the story. But it's better than zero. Go ahead, finish.
No, no, I, I'm going to start, I'm going to start.
I mean, it is what it is, and, you know, there was, it is what it is.
Yeah.
It was, it's, it was on the, it was on their Select Board meeting, and they were ready to vote it out so that Newport had no participation. And so they were kind enough to contact us and said, maybe you weren't aware that it was on their agenda, and we were not. So they delayed it and met with us, and we went in and kept the contract as it was.
Yeah, they, they had, they had requested us to attend a meeting to sign a contract that I explained to the Select Board that, that I didn't have the power to do, that that had to be done through you and the city council. So if they were basing that decision on not attendance, which.
No, that's not true. That's not what they were doing. It was along, even before you, this was something that had been going on for a while, and there was no response. And so finally culminated to the point where they were just going to make a decision. And then, um, the town administrator, in, in all fairness to him, he thought, well, maybe I should reach out. And he did. He reached out, and we spoke to him, and he allowed us to come in, and we met with him and one of the Select Board people and put it all together. Because I remember, we had that meeting, you were at the meeting. But there was a lot more to it. So it wasn't just the one time you met with him. Yes, ma'am.
Can we ask why this was a salvage operation? Because that's a strange phrase to use.
Why was it?
Why was it a salvage job?
Well, nobody pretty much, we weren't aware of it. We, uh, the council was not apprised of the requests since June.
Who received the request?
It would go to the interim city manager. And then, at that point in time, um, they, there was no response. And then, of course, with the interim, uh, chief coming on board, and it was not the chief's responsibility to actually respond. It was, you know, the city's responsibility. And so there was a lack of total communication, there are breakdowns of communication.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, is there been any talk about who's contacting the 911 Board for this? Because, like, it's all fine and good if they divvy up the coverage area, but, like, we dispatch for both of those agencies.
Yes.
And we have to know, like, if they agree on it tonight, and then they agree on it Wednesday, we need to know who we're dispatching to these areas. So is somebody taking care of that part of it?
Yes, and you will be part of sitting down when we sign all the contracts and reading all that, and you will be, it's totally included in the contract.
Okay.
Yes. So what this is a formality right now. Okay? If something funky came back in the contract, we wouldn't sign it. But right now, it is the same contract as we had prior. Um, correct, we, they showed us that, pretty much. And there might be some, a couple of terms in there, changing the routes. But pretty much right now, it is the, uh, just a rerouting of the, the areas.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, wait, I'm sorry.
Uh, I mean, to, uh, to the resident, did you happen, in any negotiations or salvage, as you said, did you happen to discuss why they drew the lines the way they did? Um, because I know for a fact, as a, as a commercial truck driver, that pulling the hill from Orleans Fire Station to the center of Coventry or taking a fire truck from here, there, regardless of the distance, it's still quicker as, as we respond.
Yes, and we did discuss that, and, you know, we couldn't, they were set, pretty much. And, you know, they made their decision of, we're going to use a straight line. They said they brought in somebody who was an expert to look at this. And they were relying upon that expert. And so we were at the point where they pretty much came right out and said, do you want any of it or not? And so we were not going to be able to convince them that the, their methodology was accurate or inaccurate, and nor was I in an expert, a bit, because I had the expertise to do that because they didn't open that up for discussion. So they had already made their minds. They were going 100% with Orleans.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure, yes.
Is it a one-year contract? Just curious.
Yes.
So I can review this.
Absolutely, that's why I said, everything is, and they're going to watch it, and it will be renewable, and it could be changed. There's, you know, going, this clause is in there that says it's open to renegotiations. It's just pretty much like grab and hold onto it, and let's move forward. And they're in a trial period as well. They don't know what's going to happen. For all we know, they can just call it. And so that's pretty much what it, the deal was. Yes, ma'am.
But I just, I find it a little strange. Why was the fire department not represented at the meeting?
At which meeting?
At the meeting with Coventry.
There were several meetings. There were Select Board meetings where they were supposed to be there, but they were not instructed to be there.
Oh, okay.
So we got a call.
But when you met, you were at a Select Board meeting?
No, it was not. It was a private meeting. It was the town administrator called with one of the Select Board people and said, we had this on our Select Board meeting. We didn't want to vote on it. We asked them to delay so that we could at least give you the opportunity to come and speak with us and see if you wanted to be part of it.
It just seemed strange.
Well, it was strange, but, you know, sometimes you don't get information, and you go through transitions, and that's what happens. So it's fixed. Okay, so at this point in time, we've, uh, I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, is that a public document?
Not yet. But, um, after Wednesday, when they do their actual formal vote, I will show it up to you. I'll have it on my hit list to have a copy for Christmas. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the fire chief job description with an anticipated vote. Now, as far as this job description is concerned, this specific one, it is going to be, uh, a final review is going to come back from the city attorney who hasn't, didn't have the time to get it today. So after you look through it and, um, we go to a vote, it will be with the caveat that the city attorney gives the final approval.
Has anything changed since the former?
Um, you know, what we did, um, with this was we spoke actually with the. You know, what we did with this was we spoke actually with the Vermont leagues and cities and towns and we also spoke with the interim fire chief and his team. And we looked at what their suggestions were and then we went to Vermont league and looked at some of the compliance rules that should be in there. And then we sent it over to our attorneys for compliance with our charter.
Has the fire department seen it?
Say it again.
Has, has the fire department seen this yet?
Did I have it?
Yes.
Just tonight.
Yeah, we just.
We just got it tonight as well.
Yeah. Yeah, so the first, the very first paragraph, the job summary, it talks about the direct advantage of the city Newport Fire Department, including fire and emergency medical rescue operations. The fire chief really does not oversee emergency medical.
And that's one of the points that will be taken out. That's where, that's where the city attorney will actually make those tweaks. However, Kevin, the, look through this, please, for the generalities and this, and the basics of what we pulled from our discussions.
Could we just get a clarification as to do we are? You keep on using the term we.
The council.
Oh, so the council is reviewing all?
They're reviewing it right now. We all just got this right now.
Oh, okay.
And Kevin, for you, we did put in here the residential requirement.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, I mean, being a resident of the city is, you know, over, up at the Davis Avenue, that's actually, that corner is dirty. We have Newport firefighters, but they are there. So I'm just wondering if it should be just.
We can put a caveat in that.
Yeah, some, be able to respond within so many minutes at the station or something.
And I sent that over for discussion. I just wanted this to be in here so you, because I know we discussed that. So I wanted to point that out to you.
Is there any rush?
Just for Kevin's purposes.
My question was, is there any rush? I don't like approving something with changes pending. You haven't had the time to sit down and go over it.
Well, we, as a group, as officers, we have it on. I just got this coffee today.
The only rushes, until we have this, we can't advertise.
That's right.
And your meeting is tomorrow?
Yes. I mean, I, I think one of the big things here is, you know, right now, the chief is considered to be on-call 24/7 through 65, based on 40 hours of pay. And we're just, we're anticipating or hoping that that, that when the new chief is hired, that he is based on 40 hours for the salary that's proposed. And with that being said, we're hoping that we can somehow present to the council, you know, plan to have officers on-call, say, any, say from 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon or until 7:00 the next day. So, you know, there's some, it just seems like there's some changes that really need to be done here. And they are mentioned in the job description. Again, it's based on 40 hours pay, but that's, that's kind of a reveal of what's going on.
And then, of course, this is the job description. It's not the contract.
Well, exactly. I understand that.
This is the, you know, and so it does have the seven to four, the 40 hour week and in the job description, those points can always be negotiated.
These are duties and.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the other part of this is, you know, it's been said September. If we keep, if we keep putting it off until the meetings, we're going to be, and I think my two months was up if I started September 2nd.
I thought it's just starting.
Yeah. And I thought, I, again, as I have said to you before, I, we would never leave the city in dire straits, but.
And I, and I thank you for that. Two months in perpetuity is fantastic, Kevin.
It's the, it's the crew. It's the guys. I couldn't do without their support and their help. But I'm, I'm getting close. Let's put it that way.
Right, but I think this is the job description. It can be tweaked.
I think that if we should, it should be voted on tonight as far as approving what's on paper here.
And I, and I think I'll, I'll speak for all of us. We just kind of had a little chat. But we're, in general, this, this captures what we talked about. And we're in agreement that it looks good, except for those two points that we, we talked about.
Right, and they can be tweaked.
Yeah.
And once again, this is just the description. And it's, you know, open to negotiation when we actually do the contract.
One thing, very last sentence, Madam Mayor. It says the chief will be provided with a cell phone for 24-hour access. Does that mean you're on-call for 24 hours, 24/7?
No, but they, somebody has to have that emergency phone, so. In other words, we're not going to shut the phone off.
So Kevin, so Kevin, I think at this point that if, say, the, the chief is on duty from 7:00 AM to, to 5:00. And then there's an officer that takes over. Dispatch would be notified of that officer and phone numbers in contact. I think the cell phone for the chief is, because he is full-time, he is the main contact for a lot of information and, you know, truck repairs, et cetera. I think that's, but, but dispatch has contact numbers for all the officers, so. It wouldn't be just that particular phone. It would be called if something happened.
Right, I, I guess just the way it's worded.
Right, right, yeah. Does that make, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. It makes perfect sense, I guess.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I just had a concern about payment for the additional on-call. A lot of times, certainly in the nurse area, there are people who are on-call. And there is some sort of compensation in addition to whatever compensation they normally get for that being on-call, you know, near a phone for that period of time. And I would hope that our firemen, who are mainly volunteers, would get some compensation for the on-call time.
So that's all been, of course, that's, of course, going to be open for the negotiations and discussions, but that has been on the top of the radar.
Yeah, and I apologize for bringing that up when this was just kind of the job description for the chief. I didn't mean to, but thank you very much.
But yeah, but when it gets to the contract level, that's where that will come about. And we did have that discussion, so it wasn't that. It was just other volunteers and people work and they don't get paid. Yes, sir.
Just because I gather you've got the best handle on this. What are the major changes between this job description and the previous ones?
So I think that this was more of an intake of what was actually happening when we met with the interim chief and his team of, so there were words that were used, say, in the former contracts from years gone by. And so you would change something from approve to implement, you know. So it was more technical words that tied into the chief's description of what was actually happening on the job. So going from paper to computers and things like that. So it was upbringing into the 20th century. So it wasn't that there were great changes in who they were and what the job itself was, but it was more technical and upgrades to, as well as to their understanding and the division of who does what as well. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So can I have a motion, please, that the council adopt the fire chief description as presented, subject to review and approval by the city attorney? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Any further comment of the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Close say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
May I have a minute? Does anybody have a copy?
Of the job description? Would you like to wait for the one that probably going to happen Thursday morning? Or would you like this one?
I would like that one.
Ask the council. I will give you mine, provided I'm going to write on here, not approved yet, because I trust you. Thank you. You are very welcome. So I think we should go back. I think Mr. Ramirez is here, correct?
Yeah, he wants to talk about that.
Did I not? Oh, I did see him. Okay, great. So let me go back to, I guess that. Okay. We're here to talk about the MVP recertification with an anticipated vote. Please, the floor is yours.
Hello, how are you?
I'm fine.
Basically, it's just a recertification that happens. We have to do that every year with MVP. It's just basically telling them that we still exist and how many employees that we're, that we have, that the city has. It's, it's, normally it's signed by the, by the city manager, always has been. The city manager's always been the administrator. And since we don't have one, that's why I asked you to appoint somebody to be the administrator. And you'll need it to get authorized to sign it. It's that simple. I mean, it's, it's nothing earth-shattering or anything because there's going to be some other documentation coming down through for the HRA contracts. There'll be three of those once I get those contracts. And that's because we have three different levels of contribution to the HRA pay. The two different unions and administrators have different levels of, of compensation. And those contracts, again, you'll need to sign unless you have somebody hired by then. And that's going to be done hopefully by the first of the year. Because if we don't get those in by the first of the year, there is a penalty that they charge.
Okay.
About $500, so.
All right, so we need to keep that on the radar?
Yes, yeah, as soon as I get them. Like I emailed MVP today to find out where they are because I usually have them by now and ready to go. I don't have them yet, but I, as soon as I get them, I'll get them filled out and get them to, to Becky so she can get them to sign.
Perfect.
So I think tonight, my suggestion would be, if you're going to vote for an authorization, I would include those right in. So that way you won't, you don't want to wait for another meeting.
So is the HRA, anything else?
No, that's all, you know, because the plan automatically renews. It's by contract, by union contract. We have no choice. We have choice of different companies. This is the best company that, there's only two companies in Vermont anyway, that, that do smart groups. It's MVP and Blue Cross. And in this case, the reason why we go with MVP is because they're the only one to have the in-house administration for the HRA. Blue Cross does not. I'd have to go to a third-party company to do it. And only one of them would do the three, the three levels that we do. And what would have to happen with them is the employee would have to submit the claims instead of all being done seamlessly, so. That's the reason why we're, we stayed with MVP the last couple of years.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. May I have a motion that the city council recertify and accept MVP's health insurance plan for city employees, including HRA documentation with authorization to be signed by the mayor or her designee?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comment? Yes.
On those forms, there's also on the last page, we sign on one of them. There's four boxes you need to issue. Because if I send it in without it, it'll send a redback of it.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Close say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Four boxes. Make sure, I know I got the four boxes, so make sure I didn't miss anything else. Is that me? Is that me?
I didn't look for my cell phone.
Is that me or is that, um, it's, it's me on the side. He said four boxes. Man, I listened to.
She needs to sign here.
By the administrator as well, right?
Yeah, she needs to sign. Well, if whoever signed the contract. She should sign it.
Okay.
So it matches this one.
Okay. Four boxes plus two.
I knew we waited for you for a reason.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to, oh, I need two copies.
Thank you. Everybody ready? Okay. The next item on the agenda is going to be the budget review, which will be, as time allows, we are going to look at administration, police department and the fire department. The procedure will be as follows for the budget presentations. The council members need to hear the presentations without interruption. The presenters will do their presentation in full unless the presenters themselves so elect to use a different format. After the presentation, the council members will be polled to see if they have any questions. And at that time, they will be recognized to ask questions. And the department heads will be able to respond to the council's questions. It is imperative that this budget process be given ample time for questions and review by the council. Persons, please, I'm asking you. Persons, please, I'm asking you, do not interrupt the process without being recognized by the mayor, because we want to keep it orderly. The public is requested to please listen to these presentations. I ask that you possibly write down your questions, and if you can't write them down, at least try to pay attention to the account numbers on the side, so that it's easier for the controller to pull up that particular slide to address your question. So if you can, I know it may be cumbersome, if you can't, you can't, but we'd like you to at least try to look at the line item when you have a question, okay? As we review these budget items, please understand that the budgeting process may trigger the need for decisions regarding tax rates, assessments, accounting procedures, and other corrective actions that may need to be taken. You should also understand that some historic practices may be discussed through this budgeting process, and that information that was authorized and possibly acted upon by any predecessor directive doesn't mean that it can't be changed going forward, doesn't mean that it was wrong or it was right. It just means that we're moving forward with this budget process, and we are going to address how everything goes forward with this process and going forward into the future. The key right now is that we focus on good internal controls when we move forward with the budget with any changes, that we align appropriate skill sets, and that we are transparent in communicating with one another, the city staff and the council, and that we have a focus on affordable equity to the residents, okay? And that is key, and the businesses in financial matters, so that we can see that Newport prospers and that we all work together to make this happen. So let us begin.
Can we just do the general revenue section?
Can we move this down so that the better can be? And if anybody needs a copy, there are copies.
So the first, the first section under the general revenue is taxes and penalties. I went through and looked at what our last fiscal year collections were on those, and I adjusted the numbers accordingly, trying to be somewhat conservative, so that we don't overestimate our revenue. Kind of the same idea as you go down through licenses and fees. Just go back up here. There were a few things that jumped out probably a little bit more than others. Most of them tend to stay the same. But line six, the payment in lieu of taxes, we've been receiving more from the state of Vermont the last few years, so I've been trying to gradually increase that line item without going over what they're sending us. I think that's the big difference in that section. Licenses and fees stayed the same. Our current use has gone up from what it had been, so I increased that number. And then this line, if it comes to the best that we can estimate those, that's what I did. That's down a little bit, because we're not giving that extra, the Walmart funds to the downtown organization. And it looks like our interest income is staying pretty much the same as what it had So that's as far as I'm going to go on the revenue, because we're going to the police department and Travis will talk about that when he gets there.
Okay, will I open it to the council members?
Yep.
Council members, do you have anything you want to say?
What is it, card use from Bell's office, line 33. What exactly is that?
So the state of Vermont has a program, and Frank could probably talk some about it, too. I'm sure he's gotten familiar with it. And I think here in the city, I think we probably only have one property. And I can't, I'm drawing a blank.
Native best, it's been split in three now, but.
Yeah, so.
Polling number, polling grain, vistick.
Yeah, so what it is, usually it's farmland, and they can put that in what's called current use. So it reduces their taxes, and then the state sends the city or the town. Funds, I don't know if it's to make up the full difference or not. I've never gotten that involved in it.
You got to do audio transfer right there?
Yeah.
Councilman, do you have any question?
Not yet.
Okay. Councilman, Jean?
Just out of curiosity, I'm 25. Is that 25% increase, you expecting that many babies?
Well, everybody called ahead.
So we just been kind of tweaking those, they kind of change off those three line items, it seems like, the birth, the marriage, the death certificates. And, you know, it's just kind of a guess, but we do seem to be getting more of them.
Well, I think you look in 22, 23, we got $400 in. I don't expect it to be any less than that. Budgeted 400, $4,000 to the issue, but I'm not sure where we are at the current time, but I suspect it would probably be close enough.
That was okay.
Any questions, Ellen?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to, if there are any questions right now on this particular area. Okay. Next. Thank you.
So now, I'm going to go over to administrative expenses. City council sections preborn stayed the same as what our current budget is, unless if the council wants any changes in that. And then we go to the city manager's office. And I, and salary increases, benefit increases, according to, I guess, what we normally get, what people's pay rates are, anticipating a little extra maybe for a new city manager, not knowing, if the new city manager's going to be getting a single plan health insurance to person family. So I increased it to somewhat in the middle, so we wouldn't be at a single rate like we And other than that, I think about what I changed in there, it's still the same salary percentage increase from my position in the city manager's position that it had been. We haven't made any changes to any of those.
So the 16 and a half percent under salaries is just for the salaries? Who's salary is on?
So the salaries are in those two line items, my salary and the city manager's salary.
Underlying 15?
Yes.
But we don't know if the city manager's going to hit an increase, because you have to offer the contract.
Do you want to talk, because we have a lot?
We, like the city manager, we're not going to automatically put that additional increase in the offering. For example, just use round numbers. If we're offering them $100,000, or we, the past city manager, let's say it was $100,000, we're not going to offer this next one $116,000. We're going to use a.
It's the budget.
Legal one, right? So we'll say, here's the contract, and say, oh, no, I want a little bit more. We can say, okay, but keeping in mind the, the limit would be 16%.
Understood.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, but it's the budget, right?
Okay.
Any other questions, Ellen?
No.
Councilman Clark?
So the city manager's office salary, who is that?
That's my position in the city manager. So there's percentages that we use to split some of our salaries over the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. We haven't made any changes to how those have been reviewed up.
That is, that is a big issue to me, that whatever you make, it should say it here. Mr. Wilson and I had an in-depth conversation, he did, with you, and we were going to try to take that out, or adjust it, so that you know what the city manager makes. So I'm not saying you're wrong, but these numbers are deceptive, that we don't know the other number. Where, where do you find the other number? It's buried under the water and sewer fund.
Right. So let me just ask this question. Are you asking how they're allocated through the other budgets?
So Mr. Johnson's office has a percentage that he says he devotes to the water and sewer, or him and his staff. And the same thing with Becky, and the same thing, I think, with Mr. Wilson. And a lot of residents in looking at this don't like that. Neither do I. I can't speak for Mr. Wilson, he's not here, but he doesn't like it here. And I'm wanting to see a real one here instead of.
Okay, so let me, I'm going to jump in on, if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind.
So I actually looked at the allocations historically, you know, and I know there were queries about that. And I did actually contact the auditors themselves and asked them if there were, if they were absolutely aligned with this percentage allocation. They said, the auditor said that they recommended that there be a cer, really a survey done and a test being done to see how things should be allocated. The type of suggestion that they offered was definitely from an auditor, and it would have been a bit cumbersome. I asked if the auditors would be comfortable going forward if we did a random two-week allocation check going forward, to see which line items should be allocated to the various funds, so that we can actually do a test study without it being cumbersome on the employees, but would be reliable, and that could be vouched and traced back to see to the time cards, et cetera, how it worked. The outcome may show that people who are not having their salaries allocated should have their salaries allocated, and other people shouldn't. So it's important at this stage, going forward in January, for us to do that type of sampling. It would not be prudent to undo the historical numbers now. This is a budget. So in the audit process, it's identified, you know, that there could be A, B, and C, and why things are allocated in the footnotes. So going forward, I strongly recommend that we do do this random identification, and we look at the allocations, and we are going forward to see which numbers belong in which funds, okay? And I think that, I did run that by, again, with the auditors before I came in here as well, to make sure that they didn't think it would be something that would not be sufficient. And they agreed that to take two weeks of this department, two weeks of this department, to see where their actual time was, would be worthwhile. It's not necessary to clock every single day for two years to see what happened. So we can do a true auditing search, and a random allocation, and figure that out. So going forward, I will definitely not only recommend that, bring it before the council, that those allocations be appropriately allocated, but I do recommend now that we don't sit here and say, let's go back and do adjustments, because we'd be guessing. So on this particular budget, the numbers, wherever they play out, when you tally it to the bottom line, it's still going to be the same numbers at the end of the day. However, going forward, beginning in January, we need to pay attention. Does that help?
Yeah.
Mr. Charles? Well, I just want to finish the council, hold that one back. Okay? You okay? Yes.
I just wanted some recognition, this document, when you're done with it, gets printed in the annual report. And while the people that are here, hear the conversations going on, some people rely on that budget. They look at it, because we vote in March, we vote to approve that a certain amount of money can be taxed to us taxpayers to make this budget all work. And if I don't come to these meetings, but I rely on this annual, I'm sorry, I rely on the annual report and this budget, what I see when I look at city manager's office, and if I happen to know that there are two people in it, I think, oh, well, between their salaries, vacation, and holiday, two people are making about $72,000 a year. That's what it says. And I say to myself, as a citizen, well, that sounds reasonable to me, if we can get a city manager and a controller for that amount of money. So really, what I'm suggesting is to be honest with this, that you at least put a footnote in.
So that was where I was going next.
A footnote in that will tell them that the rest of this person's salary will appear, and that within that water and sewer budget, you break it down as to who is, where, where money come from. In other words, it can't be that you put, you lump all of administration, all of streets, and all of the city clerk's office in, and you say $70,000 or $200,000 as one sum. We need, a person needs to know, well, is that reasonable? And I've got to see. And I've gotta see the other half of the water budget to know that, and they've, they've gotta be able to go there to see it.
So there will be, there will be, there will be, when it's all finalized and done, footnotes with cross-references on it. So it's not going to be, oh, let's take this budget and break it down to a detailed general ledger, we're not going that far. Okay, but there will be identification and statements that clarify what's going on. Okay, so you will not just look at this number, which just like the councilman did and I did, and said, okay, gee, that's pretty cool, how'd you get those two people to work for that low number? So there will be the cross-references and the footnotes.
And when will this other process start? It will definitely start in January?
Oh, with the, the selection, the random selection to identify that.
Whether or not those figures of like forty, sixty percent are accurate.
Yeah, so that, the, the, on the radar for that is to get it started for January so it can go forward. And that is what will be brought before the council, and that is what is recommended as well by the auditors.
And when you find out that the, after a two-week study of administration, that it would be accurate for the number to be, well, only forty percent should be allocated to water and sewage, will you then at that point decide, well, only sixty percent of the salary of this person should be coming from the general fund and forty percent coming from water and sewage? Will you change the, the multiplier?
Will we change, will we change the number set? So the key with that is we have to get the results.
Right.
And then once we get the results, that final decision will determine how things are changed. So I don't want to say, I'm giving you forty percent because I don't know if it's forty percent. Okay, it may be no change. So the key right now is that we need to actually do that process. And that process will then be the driver for what needs to be done. And also we'll identify if it's material. I mean, we have to see the materiality of, you know, the effect of that actual sequence audit.
Well, we have to wait for another whole year?
No, 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 the whole point is that we're going to start to do that, bring it before the council, make sure that that happens. Because you can't just keep budgeting based on, you know, the history and the way it was allocated. I believe this went back to, and I might be mistaken, but I think it was Mr. Ward who started this process in his timeframe that it started, and then it just kept going and going and going forward. Not that it's right or wrong, we don't know. So right now, we just need to revisit it, come up with more accuracy, and as I said, we may end up with exactly the same percentages or not. I'm gonna correct you, but I just, yes, Mr. Miller?
On the sampling, I'm just curious.
I'll just say one more time.
On the sampling that you're gonna be doing, I think it's great that you're gonna be sampling. Are you gonna do more than just January? Because.
Oh, I like it.
You're gonna like do maybe in the summer or sample because it could be completely.
It'll be a defined audit sample. It'll have the true evidence-based sampling that would be required.
Okay.
So, yes, but I want to start immediately so we don't have to wait till the end of the year and then go back and be in the same position right now. Yes, sir.
Well, I have two questions now. The, the first is in, since I don't understand this, in the sample, will you be looking at the entire range of city workers in each two-week period? Or will you pick a certain segment of the administration for two weeks and then look at other segments in other two weeks?
So there will be comparable periods of time that we go across. So if we say, say the sampling is for January, let's take the month of January, and everybody in each department goes through that month of January, and whatever the assumption is that the auditors, then the council decide, you know, sit down and say, this is going to be the assumption, this is what's going to be used, and say, all the departments do January. We'll see what those results show, then come back, say maybe March, and test maybe one department. And then come back in April and test a second department and see. Because the circumstances outside are going to determine as well how allocations and salaries go. If we test during a snow time, okay, it's going to skew what's going to happen. So we have to find the balance on the assumption side to do it. And the, I do rely on the auditors for that, and as an auditor, I can read what they say. So we speak the same language, so I think it will be quite beneficial to have this done. And I think it'll also be beneficial to be able to put to rest the unanswered questions that have been going on for many years. Not that, and as I said, it doesn't mean it's right or wrong, it's just the way it was allocated. And now we just want to come to tighter numbers and make sure that there's no skewed materiality on one person's salary. For example, we don't know if Mr. Johnson's salary should be allocated to this, and maybe it wasn't, and maybe he needs to be allocated, and that may jump the numbers up. So we might not like the results, but then again, we might.
And just, just to be clear, I think I know the answer, but that's usually when I'm wrong. The, the budget for this year is going to be based on the practice up to now, and any adjustments that are made as a result of the discoveries of these audits will be reflected in next year's budget.
Correct, and as we uncover this information, if it becomes material, we'll bring it before the council and it'll be disclosed. And, you know, it'll be identified that, hey, this is the process that we're identifying, and this is where we need to go.
But, for example, if it turned out, and I'm just supposing for sake of argument, that twenty percent more should go to the general fund of a person's salary, since there's no way of raising that money in the middle of the year, you really can't do anything about that except note it for building the next budget.
Except I heard that the Chronicle was gonna pick up the bill. Yes, but that's exactly what. Okay, any other questions or are we just? Okay, next.
Okay, so we're all done with the city manager section. So delinquent tax collector. So what's been happening in the last probably six years, seven years, very long I've been working on the city manager's office is a portion of my salary goes to delinquent tax collector. So when I would monthly prepare the delinquent notices and mail them out and do that sort of thing, I'd track my time, so it'd be based on however many hours I spent that week in rate for tax sales, that sort of thing. So it's usually just what I actually spend for time, it's not a percentage.
Any questions? Good? Okay.
So this switch is over actually to, Jim has a couple of sections in here, I'll let him speak too.
Okay, so I believe the next one's election expense. So as everybody knows, we have three elections this year. County meeting, primary on the same day, a primary in August, and a general election in November. So that's why the salaries are up because we paid twelve people per shift, two shifts, and we pay on that, and that's where their salaries come in. The ballots, I didn't make any increase there because we pay LHS on the ballots, it's all the same amount basically. If we have anything special, we have this having printed, if we got press. Communications are down, so I based it on two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three amount. So I went down a little bit on that. And the other expense is the machines, they come up and test those and maintain them. They have a democracy log machine, it's separate from the voice machine. So I do maintenance on them, so now there's two machines instead of one. And that's where the increase for that is. So that basically gets the expense, the election expense. Is there any questions going on?
And we've got some, have any question? Okay, just work good.
Okay, let me move on to treasures department. Basically, the salaries are up twelve percent, I'll explain that when we get back to it. Vacation is down forty-five percent based on, I think, the last thing was based on when Rosemary was here, and she had five weeks, and Robert only has two, so that's, that's where that's down. Same thing with logic, longevity pay. Office supplies are up because everything's up twenty, twenty-five percent, and we can't. Gotta have the supplies we can operate. Social Security type of wages, retirement type of wages, health insurance is up, we all know health insurance is up for everybody. Copy or lease, we're gonna have another, we're gonna have to do another copy next year for the leases running out. Repair and maintenance, that is repair, and we have to call in our computer guy to fix, fix something. And our computers are almost to your end. Last time we did, we just changed the hard drives, and now they're close to five or six years old for the kind of, getting beyond their capacity. To go back to wages, the salaries are up twelve percent because I, I put in what I thought the people would work down there. It's based on, that's based on a lot of things. As we all know, the constant essential to everybody is up twenty, twenty-five percent, bread, milk, gas, and all that type of stuff. And back in two thousand and two, we got an inflation increase, although non-certified. This was the inflation for two thousand and one, a year later. And the next year, it was still six and a half, seven percent, and nothing, nothing happened that year, and it's still good to the three percent. And so I, I, I put in what I think they're worth down there. I, at this point, it could go up, I did not do anything, I stayed with the three percent for myself, which, and I think all the department head did the same thing in all their budgets. Normally there, that is done if they group the department heads. So that could be even a little bit more. And of course, the vacation and the holidays. Vacation, I explained, because Rosemary's not here, went down a little bit, and holiday is up a little bit, and that's all tied to the wages. It's all part of the salaries. And twenty-five percent of our wages, salaries, go to water and sewer. And the rationale, I think that's pretty accurate, the rationale behind that is we, we bill four times a year, we collect four times a year. We are answering water and sewer questions on the phone every day. We get a question about some of these water and sewer, why is this, why is that, how come this, how come that? And so I think that's, that's pretty accurate. I personally don't have a phone, putting it all on the, on the clerk and treasurer. I used to do that until the last couple of years, it was all in there. And either way, it'll take me, whatever the council decides on that. So I don't know if there's any questions in here on that.
Questions, councilman?
Treasurer Clark?
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, other expenses are up five hundred and sixty-six percent. What is other expense? Mine is six.
That's, that's the comp to have a new equipment brought in here. I mean, what you see on the equipment line item, that's just the equipment. Somebody's gotta pay, when I say equipment, it's basically computers, somebody's gotta pay them to come in and do that, put that stuff in. Oh, for the city audit, the city audits, and that's, that's not mine.
Just one second, councilman, do you have that?
Or do you have a question?
No, this question was the same as me.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
The audit, we went up a little bit, we just go up on that every year, because every year gets a little more costly. Their costs are coming over here, goes up, so that's where that comes up from. The printing, last year, we had a very nice report. And I don't know if we're planning on doing that again, that's up to Becky as well. But that's what, she can give her opinion on that if she wants to. Other expense is down in the annual report, we went up a little bit because I'm sure the cost of doing that's gonna go up also. Those are just estimates, you can't, you don't know what they're gonna, what they're gonna be. And the tax listing, that's somebody else.
Okay, so let's stop at the audit and see report, any councilmembers, any question? Any questions?
Yes. Jim, as I recall, there were years, maybe it was last year or the year before, where the administrative staff, who were non-union, got an extra seven percent in addition to the three percent that basically all of the union employees were making. And so it seems to me that, and that was a raise at least ten percent when everybody else was making a three percent raise. I'm just wondering whether or not it would be fair to sort of equalize in some way those raises and maybe you didn't, you wouldn't need a full twelve percent increase in, in your department this year since you got ten percent when everyone was getting three.
I'm glad you asked that question, because I've got an explanation for that. We got a seven percent increase for inflation that year, the year after, okay? You're right, I don't believe the unions got that. But this year, they negotiated contracts both police and public works. And over three years, that's a twenty-four percent increase in salaries and those kinds. So they get an eight percent for the year, basically. Well, we went back and paid them a year back. So basically, they got the eight percent at the same time we got the seven. And it wasn't thirteen because those three percent increases were already budgeted. That was just a seven percent increase because of inflation for that year, but next year, it was still seven percent. And we didn't get another seven percent, we got three, stayed with the three. So my rationale for bringing the salaries in as I did is, in my mind, we're, we're ten or twelve percent behind the union contracts. Because we get seven percent one year and three percent every year, if you add those all up, that's only thirteen percent, okay? If you keep going with three percent, we'll wind up at twenty or something like that, or eighteen, I think. And, and all the union people are gonna be at twenty-four percent.
Well, twenty-four percent over a three-year period.
Right, so if you add seven, and three, and three, and three, and three, you're at eighteen, not twenty-four, like everybody else is.
But if you, if you were gonna get just eight percent, the way they were getting eight percent, then every salary would be increasing about equally? As opposed to an increase for you guys at twelve?
No, we, no, we didn't get twelve, we got three that were already budgeted, we got a one-time seven percent increase, okay? You can add it and you get thirteen if you want, okay? We, they negotiated contracts, and we went back a year and paid them eight percent for a whole year, a new increase. Okay, so they've caught up to us, all right? We're at ten, they're at eight now, okay? If we go to three for next year, we're at thirteen, they're at sixteen. So they're getting eight percent this year. If they go another year.
What if you would go to eight percent as opposed to twelve percent? You would all be at eight percent for each year, right?
No.
Okay.
If you wanna go for eight percent for us, the next three years will be equal.
Well, I'm sure the council can figure it out. It's the retroactive here that, that he's discussing, one year was retroactive, so it's, so it's, he has to catch up with one year, and that's what the difference is.
That's right, we have to catch up with one year. In my mind, and I, and I understand they negotiate with these unions, but in my mind, there's ten other people that can't negotiate anything. In my mind, they're just as valuable as, as the others. In my, in my office. In my, in my office, I mean, I couldn't hire two people to do what those girls do. I don't believe anybody else is capable of doing that and stepping in there in two weeks. Couldn't do it.
And for my.
It would be months and months before I could get anybody in there.
And, and also, from my discussion, and this is just for clarification purposes with the treasurer, one of the employees in his department started many years ago. So your salary was lower. And even though you get the increases, somebody newer coming in is always, could actually end up being higher than the person with the seniority. So that also factored into the job description and moving, the, the reasoning for moving wanted to kill her employee and so on. So it was all factored in, but the key that was confusing here was the, the percentage up. That was really a retroactive. It was a catch-all for what happened before, so it was like a year behind. So that was the rationale of why the treasurer put that in here. And that, of course, is also, is up for discussion and approval, but it's better to be a little bit more aggressive and with the explanation, and then understand it, and then do the negotiations down.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. It's a retroactive thing you're gonna compute on. They went back a year and got it. We got it that year, but we, they didn't, they went, we went back a year and paid them a whole year for an increase. So now, we're even. But going forward.
Yes, they're caught up in the timing.
They're gonna be 10% ahead of us at the end of year three, if we stay with the 3%. I'm just defending the non-union personnel. That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, that's okay. Any other questions here? Okay, next?
Oh. Yeah, the city clerk. Basically, the city clerk is a total company of the Treasurers Park, except for the, uh, big one, the digitalization expense. We put money aside for that, haven't done anything to that yet, but someday down the road, it's gonna have to be done. And that's what that increase is for. And the new equipment, as I mentioned before, we've got seven or eight-year-old computers in there. And hard drives in them are at least five years old in there, on their last leg. And I've got a server down there that's almost at capacity, and that's gonna have to change. I don't know if they can do that, but change the drive and all, I'm not a computer expert. But that's where the increase in that is. And that's it. Basically, it's a copy, a copy of the treasurer's. And 25% of the salaries, did I mention that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you wanna do it again?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's pretty accurate for down there. We do a lot. Actually, we bill more water and sewer, if I'm dear, we do taxes.
Okay. Corporate counsel? Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
So you just said that basically the city clerk is a copy of the treasurer.
Well, there's a couple things.
Well, right, but I'm, I'm just wondering, like, salaries every time vacation, holiday, does that mean that what I'm looking at is really just salaries, sort of proposed as 70,000 for each? I mean, I'm trying to understand when you do that.
I'm trying to divide it. I take the salaries and put half in treasurer, half in clerk.
And put half in one place and half in the other.
We're all doing the same thing.
It's not double-dipped.
No, it's not double-dipped. You add it all last together, the salaries, the kids and holidays, add them together, that's the total payment.
That's the whole.
Yes.
And, and I assume you will footnote that some of that salary is being paid by water and sewer.
Oh, sure, when they do the water.
Yeah, there'll be footnotes. But we're going to, once we get this all in play, and we actually figure out exactly why this was here and this was here, there will be clarifying footnotes. And they would be in, in the best layperson language as possible. Okay.
Okay, that's it for me, I think.
Corporate counsel?
Did we skip over tax lists?
No, I think I probably did.
There were just no questions on it, do you wanna go back to it?
I was trying to stay on Jim's stuff. Sorry.
Who does the tax listing?
So the tax listing is the assessor's office. And there's a few changes in there. We went, basically, we went from a contracted service to a salary position. So it's 20% of, the, so the zoning administrator is 80% under zoning, because that's the way we had budgeted it. And then there's 20% under tax listing of the full-time salary and benefits. You know, moving forward, we may see that needs to be a different split. But at this point, even when we were contracting, it had been a one-day, a hourly position. And I think that's about what we change. I mean, we have software that we pay for. So that's our vision software and some mapping software that we have. So, any questions?
No questions? Any questions from the zoning?
No, I'm happy with the fact.
Come on, you don't want to come with the input?
Oh, no.
Okay, so now I think we're down back by the corporate counsel, is that what you wanted?
Yes. So that line item's been 15,000 for years. I bumped it up to 18. Just to bump it up.
Well, there will be a slight increase in the rates. No, so they've increased their hourly rate, I believe it was from 200 to 200. As well. Yes?
But, but actually, in 22, 23, we spent $51,000 on corporate counsel, actually. And I, I can't imagine how much you spent this year on corporate counsel with all of the.
Increase.
I mean, is it realistic to stay at a 15 or 18? I hate to say that you might be closer to 51 again, but is that more realistic?
You know, I think that's gonna be a decision for the council.
We're gonna, we'll adjust that once we get more of the tallies, the total tallies for year-end. And we'll make those adjustments. But you're, you're probably like, it's going to be, I would say, the 43-plus. Questions from the counsel? Excellent. No, you're okay with that? Okay. Next, planning and zoning.
So planning and zoning, I realized today that I have an error in there. I double-counted some of the salary. So normally, what I do for the salaries, I put the full salary amount on the line item. And then I calculate the vacation and the holiday pay. And then I go back up to the salary line item, and I subtract those two numbers out. I forgot to do that on that line item. So there's approximately $5,400 too much there, plus whatever it's gonna do to the benefits down through. So the, the biggest increase in this is that when we made that a full-time position, there was a salary increase plus full-time benefits, which is what you're seeing here in the 80% of that position at full-time versus the 32-hours-a-week part-time position it was.
Questions from the counsel? Any questions? Okay. Next.
So the miss will build in, the custodian that the salaries afford in this section is actually a union employee. So the increase here in salary and benefits is based on the newly negotiated union contract. And the anticipation that he's gonna, he may be taking a different health insurance plan. And I think other than that, most line items are about the same, that's what they have.
Line 2205. What are we gonna buy for a tool that raised the budget 233%?
Excuse me, clerk, can you say that again? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Can you grab the microphone?
No, line number 2205.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what kind of tool or equipment we bought that raised that line item by 233% or will be buying.
So I think that was just looking at what we actually spent last year, but I can definitely research that.
Thank you.
Step nine and a quarter last year.
Step what?
Nine and a quarter.
Okay.
Also.
Also? Okay.
So that's it for the administrations, but I guess there was just one other thing I wanted to hit on real briefly before Travis says his section. Budgets are our best guess in time, the day that we're doing them, for what's gonna happen 18 months down the road. So we do it with the knowledge we have that day. And last week, I, and those numbers can change within a day or two. So last week, I finalized your budget reports, put them in the packet, gave them to the chief to deliver, walked across the hall into Jim's office and picked up my mail. And in my mail, I had the new VLCT insurance bill. And the rates are up, more than I put in the budget. So today, I calculated, based on our budget we have to pay now, our bill we have to pay now, and added the increases of VLCT, so they're gonna go up the next year, we need to put approximately an additional $36,000 in our budget. Just the general fund. I've already put it, taken care of those numbers in the water and sewer fund. So just from day to day, just that, we're all five minutes. It makes a big difference. So if I had that knowledge five minutes earlier, the numbers we were looking at in front of you would be different. So it just goes to show how it's our best guess with the knowledge that we know at the time what's gonna happen for the next 18 months. And sometimes we're pretty good at those numbers, and sometimes we're not so good.
That actually leads me to ask one question. In the past, the spreadsheet with the budget has been posted on the town website, and as changes are made, they show up all the way around. I know for me, but I'm a nerd, that is very helpful. And if there's some way that can be done going forward, I would be personally very grateful.
So I think that is exactly what was planned. We wanted to not lose this week, because we had a, would've been two weeks, and so we wanted to start. And so, yes. So how great.
I'm satisfied.
So yes, that, that is the plan, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry, just, it's our technical issue.
Right, so right, yeah, there was a little technical issue as well, so, but we did need to get through today without losing today.
No, 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 I.
No, I just wanted you to understand.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for asking that question, actually. Okay. I think you are up. Thank you.
All right. So I have one with my notes on it that doesn't have all the numbered lines, but I think I can probably find it quick enough, so. I'm fine with going through, like, each section, and if you, I'll stop at the end. And if you have questions, we can do it then, and then at the end, whatever else we have, we can go over. So I'll start on the revenue. Just, I'm gonna go over some of these grant stuff, because it comes up every year usually. So under SIU salaries, you'll see on the budget, it actually says zero. And under the actuals, it's 30,000. So we don't put in our budget for grants. So that's why that number is zero. We do have a detective that's assigned to the SIU, so we will get the $30,000 in grants again, but that will show up under the actuals for next year. Traffic court fines, pretty, pretty straightforward, kinda going off the average of the last years. I will say that I just recently had an officer get certified in commercial motor vehicle. And he's got a whole set of scales and everything, so it might not be good for local truck traffic, but those fines are usually a bit steeper when it comes to writing any kind of tickets, so that number could probably increase. But I'm just leaving it at that for now, based on past history. The resource officer, so that is a contracted position, so that's why that is in here. And those are the actual numbers that you'll see on there. Parking fines, all of the police reports, the invoice income, it's all pretty standard. The VTD, TF, Vermont Drug Task Force, so I have an officer that's assigned to that position. And again, that's a grant-funded position. So this year, I'd put in for $115,000 to cover that salary for him, and that, that covers his whole benefits package and everything. Dispatch income, 226,000 is what I proposed for this budget. So that is 19 total departments, so it's pretty much every department within Orleans County, except for one, as of right now. So you'll see the overall police income is at 316. And then under the actuals, if you go back the last year, you'll see how that was up to 570. I'm projecting this one to be around 563, okay? When all's said and done with the grants, that's where I'm projecting that to be. Any questions on the revenue side?
All good, any questions? You good to go?
Okay. And if you guys think of something after, don't, we can go back, it doesn't.
Nine, 100.
Yeah, that's it, call me, I'll answer. So under expenses, it's the administration section, this is strictly just for my position. My salary is completely in here, it's not anywhere else in the budget, so what you see here is what you get. I've put in for a 3% increase, pretty standard for the last few years across the board. There's really nothing else in this section that I've made note of, because I didn't really change anything. I've kept it the same from the years past. And I think the overall police admin section's up 3.24%. If you're wondering, like the on-call pay, I can hit on that real quick. That's a contract, so I can take on-call on the weekends. I'm on-call 24/7 essentially anyways. There's people that get paid to be on-call. If I take it on a weekend, I do get compensated to do that, but I have sergeants and I have senior officers that are more than capable to take on-call during the weekend, so it actually works out pretty well. And that is actually contracted base. So the number, and I'll go over it when we get down to patrol, but the number that you see in there, it's 52 weekends in a year, and they get $225 to be on-call, so can't really change that number. So it doesn't matter if it's in my section or in theirs, but I just put it in there so I'm not normally paid on-call for the weekend. Any questions under my section?
I have a comment under section, so I just talked about the insurance. So on line 60, the place liability insurance that we have budgeted for 45,000, quarantine move bill, and then I added those 8.7% increase, it should be more like 60,000. And that's, that's just that one line item.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't- If it's personal, then don't answer it, but a health insurance for one person at 32,000 is higher than some of the health insurances for four people in some of the other areas. I was just curious, do policemen have a special kind of health insurance?
I can speak specifically for ours. We have a single or a family plan, and I have a family plan.
And that is how much it's costing for one person?
Or family?
Yeah.
There's a difference before, a single or a family, yeah. Okay, I'll move into the patrol. So the one big thing that I had, and I understand that the budget is gonna be difficult this year, like with the increases across everything. The addition that I had put in my budget this year is I have budgeted for an additional officer to be added to the police force. I have a few reasons for that, and I can explain those. But that's why you see the increase up to 19.88%. Now with that said, 90% of this budget that goes under the expense for patrol and dispatch, 90% of that is salary and benefits. So that leaves me about 10% to do the operations, to make the people that I have that get paid to actually do the work with the equipment and everything that we need. So I just think that's important to point out, because salary benefits chew up 90% of the budget. The new officer, one for public safety, right? We are fully staffed, I don't think you can find many departments in the state that are fully staffed, and I do take a lot of pride in that, we have a great group. And we still respond to quality of life complaints, like that's not happening throughout the state. And I don't have to tell everybody here this, but you take care of the little problems, crimes, it fixes the bigger issues. Now, I'm not saying Newport's perfect, there's plenty of issues, we've had seven homicides in a four-week span, all right outside this general area, pretty close to home. I just wanna be prepared. Have any other officer allows us to put somebody on a swing shift. Currently, we don't have that. We run a minimum two, two officers 24/7. If they pick up a lodging, they're tied up for a minimum four hours, usually it's more like eight, so that leaves one guy alone to work the road, and he can call people in if they need to. There's a huge increase in the state of Vermont right now with violent crime, I don't think I have to tell anybody that either. If you turn the news on every single night, there's a shooting somewhere, right? Just trying to be prepared. Right now, if I go down one officer, and yes, I say we're fully staffed, if I lose one officer, I'm pulling a detective off the, his detective duties to fill the street, or I'm calling a sergeant in off their regular shift to fill it, and that takes away from overtime. Adding another officer, I understand the expense behind it, it's gonna set Newport up for one, but the police department in a much better situation to provide the services that we've been providing. So, and just to go back to the revenue side of things, I understand we can't count on grants and stuff like that. I basically have two officers right now that their positions are paid for. So I have about $215,000 that comes in for their salaries between the task force, the SRO, and the SIU positions. So these salaries that you see here are just what it would cost for 15 full-time officers, or 14 actually, because I'm 15 in the admin section.
You have a question?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Nope.
We went over the budget with the chief, and he told me the last time Newport had another officer hired in the office was how many years ago?
It was a while ago, yeah. It was, it was a little, it was a while ago. We've been not struggling to be at the full staff, but it seems like we get there and then somebody leaves to go somewhere else, and we're just trying to keep that balance back and forth as best I can.
Because of there's, for safety issues and reasons, you have to have two officers on. If one of them bangs out, you're paying overtime. So rather than paying time and a half for somebody that's higher up on the pay scale, it's cheaper to get somebody less. And plus, there's gonna be officers retiring in the next year or two. And it takes about a year to train an officer, give them at the basic level where they can head the road. I know it's an added expense in attack care, but I think it's preventative, and if we've, we've seen what happens when we don't have a police department. And if people wanna know what it looks like, read the paper, visit Burlington that night. I think we're awful lucky up here to have what we have, a full-time, very competent police force.
And just to add on to that, it's not gonna eliminate overtime, there's no way around that. Will it decrease it? Yes, absolutely it will, but it's not gonna eliminate overtime, there's always going to be overtime. Just gonna hit on a few of the sections that are up, that I'm guessing you guys probably looked at when you reviewed the budgets. The on-call pay, I hit on that briefly, so $225 a weekend per contract, 52 weekends, $1,700, so that's why that's up 125%. Uniform purchases, I kinda broke this out. One dress uniform, I only, right now, I've tried to switch the uniforms within the last, it took me about two years to finally get, but this right here, what I'm wearing, is what we wear every single day on the street. It's comfortable, it's workable. We no longer wear shirts and ties and polyester suits unless we're going to court, doing something formal, or we have to dress up, we call them our Class As. So one set of dress uniforms is $245, right? So that's about $3,500, just to get everybody one dress uniform. Everybody has two pairs of these pants, two pairs of this shirt, two short-sleeve shirts, and that's about $3,700 roughly. So that's why I upped the uniform purchase, it says it's up 66%. There was not enough money in there for me to buy everybody a new uniform every year, they should have at least two, they should technically have four, but we're getting by. Go down through... Uniform allowance, again, that's, that's contract, that was negotiated in the contract, that's up 32%. Training, you'll see as well that I have upped the training by $2,000. All full-time officers in the state have to do 30 hours minimum training. So I just took the average hourly rate of my department and times that by 30, by how many people I have, and that's $13,612. So that leaves me, let's just say, it leaves me $9,000 left for training. That is just covering the bare minimum, right? So now I have $9,000 left to send somebody to a different class that they wanna go to, a different training that they wanna go to, and those are usually not one- or two-day trainings, sometimes they're week-long. And we live in Newport, Vermont, we have to travel everywhere we go, it doesn't matter. We have an SRT team that has been to, they've, all five of them have been to SWAT one training down in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. They're all certified now, so they're up and running, they're very capable, but that's expensive to send them to that, right? So you're talking almost $800 a person for the week to go down and take a training like that. That's just one example, but that's like for any officer that would go. The other thing for training, where we do save a little bit on the expense, is we have in-house K9 instructor, use of force instructor, TASER instructor, firearms instructor, so a lot of that stuff, we don't have to go away to do, we can do a lot of that stuff in-house. So we're gonna have our TASER training coming up soon, and our two instructors are gonna be able to certify all of us. I've had several departments reach out to me already saying, "Hey, we don't have a TASER instructor, can we use your guys?" Which, if they do, then yes, we do send them an invoice for their time, it's not on the city's dime, but that's just, like, we're set up really good in-house to keep training our own staff with certified people inside. Equipment, that's pretty much everything else that you see, plus what's in our car, you know, like cameras and, in-car cameras and stuff like that. We bought a shield with it one year. We purchased ammo, I've split that between equipment and training. Ammo is super expensive, so I did raise that up a little bit. Think that was the big ticket items I had under patrol. Any questions there?
Just Stone Garden, we have zero.
Yep.
Don't know the future, inside.
So again, that's, that's a grant, so they, I can't budget for a grant. We are still actively participating in Stone Garden, and there will be some numbers into there under the actuals for 24, 25.
Can you explain the sick pays at zero?
Uh, sick pay at zero.
Hold on, I'm sorry, line 66.
Again, that's, I believe, and Becky can correct me if I'm wrong, like, we can't anticipate people taking sick time, so like, they could go all year without taking a sick day, and we're not gonna pay them anything, but if they take, I don't know, I mean, everybody has a, probably sick at some point, they got kids sick, they're sick, so that's why we can't, it's hard to budget for that, I guess. Good? Okay, moving on to dispatch. Again, salaries negotiated in the contract, this one is up higher, you'll see that, so I'm gonna explain that real quick. Last year, I was able to add a supervisor position in dispatch, so we went from four full-time dispatchers to five, and that's why that number's up higher, because it reflects that position which is in there, and we do have full, five full-time dispatchers currently with a dispatch supervisor. I didn't up anything else in here, the training and everything, I did keep the same. I do wanna point out though, that we have two dispatchers that are, they're CTOs, basically means that they're certified to train other dispatchers, so we can do that in-house as well. And they need to do the training, certified yearly, to do that kinda thing, but most of the other trainings that we do, we take care of in-house for dispatch. Anything else there from anyone?
Any questions there? Okay? All good?
Okay. I'll hit on animal control, and nothing changed there. Contracted services. Kept it all the same. And then I think that was it for the expense part of the budget. If anybody doesn't have any questions, or if you do, I can answer them, if not, I'll move on to debt service. Okay? So under debt service, and I'm just gonna hit on the stuff that's for the police department, this is where you'll see all of our cruisers here that we are paying on. So EQ41, and I don't have the line here, so I apologize, but if you just look where it says EQ41 2020, that car is gonna be paid for in January of this year, so in about a month, that car's gonna be paid for. And then if you go down to EQ42, that car is gonna be paid for in November of 24. So typically, we're usually paying on three cars at a time, COVID kinda offset that, had a lot of troubles even getting cars, so sometimes they were staggered back to November, February, March. One year, I got cars back-to-back, even though they were purchased in separate budget years. So they kinda offset the flow a little bit, but essentially, we get a new car every single year, and we're usually paying on three at one time. Under the police TASER lease, you'll see that, so our TASERS that we have, that we carry, it's a lease program, it's a five-year lease, this is year four that we're gonna be in, we pay $3,500 a year, that covers every TASER that we have, training cartridges, if we deploy an actual TASER in the, actual deployment, they send us new cartridges without any fee, that's all included in there. It's a great program, love it, it's, it's perfect. So if we have any issues, we send it in, they send us back a unit that actually works, they'll fix it, and we're good to go. That was all I have under debt service, does anybody have any questions on that?
Which vehicle, uh, yeah, which vehicles you say is gonna be paid off in January?
So 41's gonna be paid off in January, and 42 is gonna be paid off in November. And then, any other questions, sorry?
You're good.
The last section I will hit on then is the capital. So under the capital, the first part for me is the bulletproof vest replacement cycle, so I've been setting $5,000 aside every year for that, kinda planning ahead. You know, unfortunately, if I hire a new officer, they need a vest to work the road, can't just wait a year and try to apply for a grant, so when they come in, sometimes I have to purchase those, and I'll purchase those out of my equipment line item once in a while. However, I have seven officers that need new vests in 2024, so that is a known for me, and I also have five vests in our cruisers that need to be replaced. The vest that I'm wearing right now with this whole, the outer carrier and everything, it's about $1,200 per vest for this, just the vest and the carrier, nothing else on it. So seven of those, and then I need five in the cruisers, those are about two grand in the car, so I'm looking about $18,000 for that. They do have grants available through the Department of Justice that come out, and those grants are usually like a 50% match, so they'll pay for half of them, and then we pay for the other half. So if I can get seven new vests and five new cruiser vests for between nine and, I'm gonna say nine and $11,000, 'cause the prices might change a little bit, that's what I will use this money for that I've been setting aside in the capital. PD tech equipment, fleet replacement. This is a lot of our in-house network stuff that we have that's very expensive to replace. We have our own internal network structure that we use, we don't have anything that's saved in a cloud anywhere, we don't have an evidence library, everything that we do is saved in-house on our own network. Dispatch equipment, there's things like infrastructure upgrades, upkeep, maintenance, things like that. We're looking at possibly updating one of our crews, coming up very soon, those are very expensive. There's an antenna that we have, one of our repeaters at the reservoir, that I would like to try to extend up higher, basically as high as I can go without violating any regulations, just to get a little better coverage, that's all. So, and that all obviously costs, costs money to do, so. That's kind of it for my capital. Is there any questions on that?
All good?
All set? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
We wanna muscle the fire department since they've all-
Yeah, we want the fire department to go. You wanna go, right?
Well, no.
You know, if you don't go, that leads me to the same mother of a mo-
So, well, this is gonna be a little bit out of context, but I just wanted to, this morning, quickly, this has nothing to do with budgets, but this morning, in the town of Coventry, the poop kinda hit the fan, so to speak. And I just wanna mention to Travis that I think it's noteworthy to say that the dispatch did an incredible job, they had four fire departments going at one time, we had that event in Coventry, they had a structured fire in Troy, and they had a couple of accidents on the interstate. And I can tell you that being on the end of that radio, Travis, it's amazing what you guys do there.
Yeah, it was crazy in there.
Yeah, and the discipline, I mean, you could hear it in the background when you call on the radio, the amount of, the amount of things that were going on at once that they were handling was amazing, and I think Newport City is very- And I think Newport City is very fortunate to have the leader that they do in the PD, and, uh, I'm, I'm super, super proud to, to work with you guys. So, you guys did an amazing job.
Thank you.
Pass that on. So, with that being said, the reason I said that is because I'm really a fish out of water here with this budget. Uh, especially just being here for two months and not really having any contact with what went on here. Um, I'm gonna defer to, we actually have a couple guys here that, that are very, very good with budgets, as your wife say. But, um, but Becky also, I had spoke to Becky about maybe helping out, because, again, I'm a little bit of a fish...
Because I'm the one that threw the numbers in there?
Yeah, that's...
You can say it.
And to try to follow the report that Travis did, uh, that's gonna be almost impossible.
We have a good time. Step on up.
Uh, no, I'm not, no, 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 I'm good, I'm really good. Becky, go ahead.
So, under the fire department, the income, uh, the bulk of that, their income is from Coventry. And that has gone down in the last few years. The main reason that that's been going down is they pay, um, it's based on a three-year rolling average of their calls. And their call volume is being, is seeing pretty much the same. What's been happening is we've been paying off our debt service. So they pay whatever that three-year rolling average is toward our capital expenditures or our debt service, um, to pay for our equipment, that portion, say it's twenty percent of rolling average. Um, so they're paying twenty percent of our debt service payments for us. Well, we've been paying trucks off, and we don't have a new truck in. So the debt service that we're paying is down. So no matter, even if the percentage stays the same, what they owe us is gonna go down. So that's what you see in the last couple of years, is, you know, we were up as high as forty-two thousand. Now we're down building them twenty-eight. I think this year's bill just went out at around twenty-nine and change. So that makes a, a difference on, you know, what they're bringing in for income. So I just kinda went down through, because, you know, I knew Kevin didn't really wanna put in budget numbers. And so I kinda went down through and I just, you know, did what we typically would do. I put in the standard, you know, three percent increase, um, tried to add in some extra, um, I shouldn't say extra, but not knowing who the next chief's gonna be and what they're gonna take for benefits, I put in for a two-person health insurance plan. So I kinda went middle of the road. And most of the other expenses, I just, you know, benefits calculate the way they calculate, and the rest of them, um, of course, now I know that these two insurance amounts here online, nineteen and twenty, need to change and need to go up. I didn't put anything, because the council really hasn't had the conversation, if there's been the on-call pay for the new chief, uh, I mean, sorry, for the officers to cover those off-hours. So, there's nothing in there for that yet. Um... So the rest of them, we're just looking at actuals and, and filling the numbers in. So it's, this section of the budget probably is a little rough compared to the others.
Yeah, so Becky, that line item twenty-eight, that health insurance, that is reflecting, because it's the unknown, you just don't know if it's gonna be a one person or family, right?
Right, so I, I put a two-person plan in there, because, um, what the previous chief had wasn't gonna... Probably cover what somebody new would be.
So, um, just real, real quick, um, just looking at line thirty-eight, the other training expense. So that, um, covers also our mutual aid training. So, um, every year, Northeast International Mutual Aid, which the fire department is a member, hosts a weekend-long training class over at North Country Union High School. Um, the price is, has been a hundred and twenty dollars per person for the weekend. That price is expected to go up, um, this next year, number one. But number two, I mean, you could, you could do the math and you could say, well, you know, two thousand dollars divided by a hundred and twenty, you could see how many people we could send to that, and that leaves nothing left for any other classes that we may, we may wanna bring in, that we may have to pay, you know, a thousand dollars for or something like that to get a specialized class here for something. It would be nice to keep that number at three thousand, um, just so we have that kind of earmark with the expectation of the expenses will be going up there, just, just for our local training, say nothing about anything, anything else we're gonna bring in.
So, anything else that you see in there?
Well, I'm looking at the fuel, oil supply, you know, going up like three hundred dollars, I mean, but we all know that fuel oil is... So I swear that some of this will increase the cost, but, you know, and I, and I understand you punched in numbers from, without much help from the interfire chiefs. This is not a reflection of you at all.
No, I, I don't take it that way.
Um, on that same note, line twenty-one, the gas price, do you think that'd be a fair amount?
I mean, I'm just, so the vehicles, of course, the fire trucks are all diesel. I mean, if this is actually referring to gasoline, I'm, I'm assuming that it may be for the chief's vehicle?
Actually, it's, it's gasoline and diesel.
It is both.
The song goes the same place.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I know we get our fuel over at Fred's on the bluff road up in Cary, so I know we're getting it as, as probably a good price as we can, but... That's all I have.
Good? Okay, we're good.
Okay, so...
Well, you did a great job.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, yeah. And again, I'm a little embarrassed, and I, I apologize, but this is...
So, the fire department does have some debt service items here, and some capital expenditures. So the fire chief's vehicle has been paid off. And I think... I think they're getting close to paying off this other fire truck here. Yeah, so this is gonna be our last truck payment on this two thousand fourteen fire truck payment. So there again, that would decrease Coventry's bill, once that payment goes away. And there's the fire department gear lease, which I think that's your scoop of gear.
Sure. Turn up your... Yeah, turn up your SCBA. SCBA, it's probably the SCBA, actually.
It is.
Yep.
And what is that here?
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
So I think that's it under debt service. And under capital expenditures, we have, um, five thousand dollars for the firehouse repairs and maintenance, and sixty thousand for fire vehicle slash equipment. So some of that, we had, um, as we paid off the fire trucks, we put it down into capital expenditure, and some of it, the first year, went toward buying that new ATV. And then the next year, there's money going toward putting the equipment on the new fire truck that was ordered. So it's kind of, hopefully, either replacing equipment for you, or it's money we're saving up to go toward paying for the new truck. So that we're not decreasing that line item and then having to bump it way back up when we get a new truck.
Just, uh, one other thing, just to, to make you aware, and we're probably going, not, not probably, we're going to have to have a fairly respectable capital expense to purchase new extrication equipment. Um, our cutters and spreaders, um, did not pass their last annual recert. And the technician essentially said, um, that to repair these would be so costly and time-consuming to have equipment that's twenty years old, basically operational again, that it makes far more sense to buy the new equipment, um, faster, more powerful. And this is the other part, that the new equipment is more powerful, whereas some of the older cutters, our older cutters, uh, are not able to cut some of the A-pillars in the new cars with the boron steel reinforcements. Um, whereas the new cutters that we could buy today, that are battery-operated, lighter, more portable, can. So, we're looking into that, we're actually gonna have a demonstration, um, from Homatro, which is a manufacturer, um, of extrication equipment. Uh, we're gonna have a demo, uh, from them in...
About two, two weeks?
Hmm, next week, yeah, the twelfth, the twelfth. So that's something that was kind of a, a newsflash to us when that equipment failed. So that's something that we've been looking at for the past few weeks.
Do you have that estimated number?
I don't have that estimated number right now. We're gonna try to, obviously, be as gentle on the budget as we can, but still, you know, we have to, we have to have certain equipment to meet our operational goals.
So it's basically our frontline extrac- extrication equipment that's basically outdated, and, you know, after every yearly maintenance, it's, it's time for it to, he's just saying, there's no sense in putting money into these, because you're putting good money into bad, so... But as soon as we get some concrete numbers, we'll be able to present, yes, yeah. And I know the only other thing, Becky, is the, the maintenance on the fire station itself. Um, we have a door that needs to be replaced, and I do have an estimate on replacing the door, uh, one of the big overheads. The door, the door will need to be replaced in whole, but he can take pieces off that door to replace a couple of other pieces on other doors that are getting rusty and they need to be replaced, but that's something that I can get. And the, and the station itself, you know, we really need to start looking at, like, kind of a yearly maintenance budget schedule where things are done over there, because everybody thinks it's still a new building, but it's got, it's got some age on it a little bit, so...
I know me, it's gonna be a very wise...
Yeah.
That's not twenty-six years old, that stuff.
Yeah, I know, twenty-six, yeah. Wish I was twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, right?
I think that's it.
You're twenty-six?
Thank you, Joe.
Sure? This is gonna be my last.
That's hot?
My last, yeah. I just wanna go back to non-union personnel here. We don't get a chance to negotiate, and we're kinda, we're kinda at the will of the council. I just wanna point out, there's five, there's ten non-union people, ten or eleven, yeah, I think, to five, five department heads. Um, I think, uh, Matt include, I think Tom's got two people that are in, in the official, in our union, yeah. And I've gone through these budgets, and I noticed that none of them put anything in for increases in salaries, only the three percent. So I think, at a minimum, the non-union should have a catch-up year here. Um, because we're gonna be just falling further behind the eight ball compared to everybody else. And, uh, so I hope the council considers that.
Can I just, just to clarify, I think that was what, sixteen non-union, all in, you said?
What?
You said sixteen non-union?
No.
Or eleven?
There's eleven, there's ten, ten non-union, ten or eleven, I think. The five, other ten fiber department heads, the other department, whatever.
Okay.
But Tom has two people included in that that aren't in that ten, is supervisors over there.
Okay, thank you.
Just can't negotiate.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how many total...
So I hope the council considers that, because we got a lot of, three of us in here, got seventy-five years of experience, and a couple of new guys, so we got over eighty-plus years of experience.
Except he's twenty-six. Okay, so, um, it's your call, how awake is everybody?
It's not my call, I, I think that's what we had kinda planned.
We planned to get through, so we're good.
Yeah. It's just, um, going forward, how you wanna do it, would you wanna have your meetings, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, so, um, we probably will be setting some special meetings going forward. What's your thoughts on this council member?
We have public works, rec, various, one, two. I think we're good this night.
Yeah, I think so too, you're okay? Are you all right with, with us cutting that and moving on to the next item? Thanks for your patience, everybody, I know this is... French. I'm trying to find the right word, but I know, but it's important, of course, and, but I know you have to stay focused. So, new business? New business, any council members?
No new business, no thanks.
Uh, Light Up the Night was awesome, again, every year, everybody involved, thank you.
It was fantastic. Um, any new business?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I've got a couple of collections that need approval. I don't think I mentioned this the last meeting, but the way this works, uh, they're all renewals, and if it's somebody new, Travis, that's irrelevant, check him out, make sure, yeah, you haven't had any problems with these people before, so... Uh, one is industrial cigars, I think that's, it's up on the Derby over there, yeah. And the compound, which is the restaurant. So if I gave a motion to approve those two, it'd be great.
I have a motion to approve those two, with the license approvals?
I think I got motion.
A motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion's counted. Okay, I'd like to announce that I've actually had some in-depth discussions with the receiver, Michael Goldberg. And at this point in time, we've actually engaged in some direct conversations, and I'm, the receiver and I are gonna be setting up a meeting with the governor, and we're all going to be sitting down and bringing forth the proposals that have come to us, and see how viable they are, and start to take some serious movement and present to the public about what can actually go forward, uh, and I don't wanna say the hole, I don't wanna say the pit, the corner, okay? The new economic development corner, um, but the discussions are serious, and the receiver is ready to start negotiating. So, let's do it, Newport.
Manometer?
Yes.
What do you mean by proposals, and how many do you have, and...
So I've had some people coming to me, the receiver has had some people coming to him, some of a, um, when I sit down with them, we'll know which ones have crossed, because he may, we may be talking to some of the same people. I think that we are, um, and so that's what this meeting is gonna be about, and we wanna get, um, the governor's input, as well as what the governor might suggest, and how they could participate or not participate. But we're all gonna sit down... not participate, but we're all gonna sit down now, and Newport's gonna be the focus, and we are gonna focus on getting that, something over there that's viable for Newport and ties into a more holistic opportunity for Newport.
I'm sorry, uh?
That's okay.
On proposals, you mean, you should sell the property, buy the property, or?
Yeah, so that, in other words, the receiver would have to sell it, but the receiver's being fair and wants to see how we all wanna work together, and, you know, we have investors who may wanna come, and one has actually made an offer to the receiver, somebody has come to me, somebody is talking to both of us, so we wanna sit down and see which ones are viable and which ones would really work for the city, and then bring it back and start negotiating and make something good happen here. Yes, okay, you have one more question? No, just kidding, I'm just kidding, go ahead.
No, I'm gonna talk now. Is the receiver adjusting his request for payment to something that is within the bounds of reason, or is he still asking for the amount that he's been asking for, for years, which evaluations done by outside parties suggest is 10 times higher than what the property is worth?
So, I think that the only way I could really answer that, and I'm not skirting this issue at all, is I have to have a meeting with him. And, but he was very clear that he was open to now negotiating, he finished what he needed to do with his other projects, that, so that he can now focus on this.
So, so.
Go ahead.
Can I translate that to say, once he's sold Burke, he has nothing less but that, and he wants to get out of there so he can go home to Florida?
He's already in Florida, so, but he is done, yes, he is done with that.
So, so this is the last.
So, this is the last piece of the puzzle, and right now, that puts us in a very good negotiating position.
Your turn. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joe. So, so if the receiver's not happy with the proposal, can he refuse it?
Receiver always can, you know, refuse anything, but that doesn't mean that it goes away. I mean, you can refuse, but then there's other ways to negotiate and.
So, realistically, he'll.
Realistically, right now, he has literally spoken to me a couple of times, and just recently, two days ago, and said he's ready. So, when somebody finally says they're ready, and he knows that I've been talking to specific people that I know he's already talking to as well, so we both know kind of what the deals are, so it's going to be too difficult to play the game, so let's sit down and make some, something happen. Yes, go.
But to be clear, he doesn't care what goes there, what he cares about is the amount of money he can get for his investors.
So, I'm going to say that, I mean, I can't speak for him in that, but I'm going to say, at this point, I'm not so sure that's true. I'm going to say that he really is interested at this point in seeing some things happen, because some of the people that made proposals are people who do business in Florida as well. So, he also is an attorney down there and has other clients and does other business, so sometimes it's better to be more open-minded.
So.
And also, just as a, I mean, I'm a receiver myself on different projects, and sometimes you do say, what's the benefit for everybody else, and, you know? He always would have to collect money, and the amount of money that he would get for this piece of property, if he just did it as a straight sale, isn't going to make him whole. So, why not walk out of there as a hero receiver and do good for the public?
I can see how that would appeal to him, after all this time.
Well, it's happening, so let's just make it happen.
Timeline, you think, by the end of next year, you think you'll have a buyer?
Well, I think we have some right now who are willing to start talking some serious money and put some money down, so that's why we wanna meet, and we want the governor to be available. But as I know more, the council will definitely get all the information and then, of course, show. But as I said, I'm, I'm pleased that he reached out strongly this time, you know, we were just, we were talking, and I spoke with his liaisons, but now he personally said, okay.
When you say make the receiver whole, what does that mean? Is he a money investor in the property, or what does that mean?
No, I mean, you know, to make a receivership whole, to pay off all of the creditors, you wanna get as much money as you can, and that's just not going to happen for this one piece of property, for what his receivership is. Just like I'm a receiver, if I wanted to settle all the assets to make creditors whole, it just doesn't happen, maybe they get 20 cents, 50 cents on the dollar. So, right now, if he can be a receiver that not only gets the same percentage back, but also provides good for a community, he will definitely get, become another receiver on another case, in another, in another map. And that's the kind of vision that works for us, so, let's just see what happens, right? We will definitely be forcing that to happen. So, next item on the agenda, old business. Now, all business. Okay. Next item, set the next regularly scheduled meeting for December 18, 2023, at 6:30 PM. And please bear in mind that we may be setting some additional meetings to go over budget, but right now, we're gonna aim for that. So, do I have a motion to set that meeting? A motion, second?
Second.
Motion in two seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Okay, here's the biggie, the German.